I'm calling this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its sustenance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On behalf of the council and the town, I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. I'd like to recognize Lieutenant Jason Woods from the Silver City Police Department, who will be here with us for the meeting. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does anyone want to make changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
No changes. Next item is council comments. Councilor Bedison.
Thank you, Mayor. No comment.
Councilor Canno.
Thank you, Mayor. No comment.
Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Councilor. No comment. I'm in the room. No comment.
Thank you. Councilor Ammon Smith.
I can't believe we're silent. I just want to say that I'm looking forward to the event that will be happening over the later day weekend. And I think it's going to be very exciting when I sign the log days.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of minutes of the August 13, 2019, regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ammon Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council of the Town of Silver City meeting of August 13, 2019.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Bedison.
Thank you, Mayor. A second to the motion is stated.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public input. One person signed up, Reagan Vaughn. If you'll come on and press the little button there on the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, Mr. Brown. I'm Reagan Vaughn. I'm from Universal Waste Systems, New Mexico. And I'm just here to give you all a brief update as to where we are in the transition process with regard to the solid waste collection services. And so, the list I'm going to read is basically what we've accomplished since the last meeting when we were here on July 23rd when the contract was executed. And so, first and foremost, I'd like to introduce our new site supervisor, though I'm sure here he does not need an introduction, Mr. Weigle Morales. We're very excited to have him onboard. He's our go-to guy here for good reason. So, moving on, we've purchased our local shop and equipment yard at 86 Bypass Road. We've purchased two additional collection vehicles, and this is in addition to the vehicles that we are purchasing from the town. And all of these vehicles, before they hit the road on September 2nd, will be equipped with the Third Eye Safety Monitoring System, which is the 360-degree camera system. And I've seen that work when there's any kind of a notification that pops up on the computer screen, and you can see all the way around the truck, you can see what the driver's doing. It's just the coolest thing, and we're really excited to be able to incorporate it into our operations. We have submitted our performance bond to the Town of Silver City, as well as our business license application with all applicable fees. We've transitioned the town's customer database into our software system, so that we're fully prepared to handle all of the service-related calls that'll be coming in. In addition, we have also been training our staff. They've been really going over Silver City maps. We have our CSR that's the lead for this project is from Silver City, and so she's very familiar with the area. We have finalized our mapping and data for the residential container audit that we're going to be performing once we take over and start doing the route. And our five drivers have completed the background process, with the exception of the results from the Dutch stream. Once those are in, then they'll be good to go. We have established an account with the local fuel provider here in town. We've submitted all required documentation to the solid waste authority for our use of the landfill. Our commercial outreach postcards are printed, and they'll be mailed out by the end of the week. We'll be working with Manager Brown in the next week with the newspaper ad that we're going to put in the Daily Press and in the Sun News that basically is reaching out to residential customers and giving them, you know, some information with regard to who do you call for a billing question or new service, as opposed to who do you call for, you know, a service issue? And then it'll also include some tips for the best service that we can provide. And finally, next week, our safety team will be in town. We'll be doing a complete driver training for the SMITH system, which is our ongoing education curriculum that we have, that our drivers participate in every week. And we'll be ready to roll on September 2nd Labor Day. And so, please, if you guys have any questions or, you know, any concerns, anything at all, please, Mr. Brown can contact me at any time, and I'll be happy to get you the information you asked for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next is reports. Do you have any reports, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next is new business.
Mayor, I think Officer Wood, you wanted to do a small update on the OHV.
Sure, Officer Wood. Come on up to the microphone, please.
Good evening. Regarding the OHVs, we haven't been having any issues with the OHVs here in town. We have stopped a handful here in town which have been the same ones we've stopped before. Currently, the chief is coming up with some kind of idea for a decal to place on the OHVs that we do stop, showing that they are in compliance of the ordinance. And other than that, I have no other updates.
Any questions or comments? Councilor Bedison.
I'm happy that everyone is in compliance. That's good news.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, sir. Anything else, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next is new business, item A, which is the approval/disapproval of a special dispensary permit application and waiver of NMSA 1978-60-6B-10 for alcohol sales near a church for the Carnitas Musica y Mas Fiesta from August 30 to September 1, 2019, at Golf Park, 1201 North Oak Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Alcohol service on August 30 from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., August 31 from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and September 1 from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Liquor license holder, license number 28098. Owner name, Dahl Enterprises LLC, DBA Q's Southern Bistro, 101 West College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I move further, I would like to make a correction, if possible. Okay. Sunday liquor sales are now allowed until 12:00. So, we'll be from 12:00 to 6:00.
On?
On Sunday.
September 1.
September 1.
September 1, from 12:00.
12:00 p.m.
Yes, sir. 12:00 p.m.
Okay.
Okay. Since I was founder of this fiesta, I'm going to ask the council to see if I'm going to be able to vote on it when it comes to make the vote for it, if possible, when I get through my presentation.
Sure. Yes, sir.
I think that the council made his disclosure. He might also mention whether he's deriving any personal economic benefit, and if he's not, then there's no problem.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that true?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. This fiesta will be held, as we all know, Sunday Labor Day weekend, and it's been in the making for a couple of months, but we finally got together. So, it's going to be called Carnitas Musica y Mas, and we are going to have a lot of different types of music on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We are going to have food vendors. We are going to have a beer garden. We are going to make a $5 fee for it. But we'll be totally enclosed. And so, everything inside, even the beer garden, is going to be enclosed. We're going to have one entrance. And of course, there are some exits that was made available to us. Okay?
The merge exits.
Merge, yes. Yeah, merge exits. Okay. Okay. A little bit about the fiesta. We do plan on Mario Pintana's trying to have a bottle exhibition there. I think it's going to be Mario and Mancal de Ambuán. No, I'm not.
No.
No, I'm just kidding. We have worked very, very hard for this thing to happen, and rumor has it that the Pachuca's are coming down. And the Pachuca's are zoot suited.
Oh, wow.
And they're from the castle.
Yeah.
And rumor has it, and I saw them here for a blues festival, and we're going to have a dance contest. It's going to be all this music. So, we're really looking forward to having this fiesta. And I hope that people turn up. I know it's going to be a lot of fun downtown, and I think the more that we have it, the more that we express it, for everybody is invited. And we are going to have Spanish, country and western, still music, rock and roll, actually, rock and roll, and we're going to have an event coming down from Tucson. So, we're going to have a lot of food vendors, like I said, so hopefully that this thing will turn out to be okay. And I think I mentioned to you a couple of years ago that we are having a fiesta for fiestas. And with that in mind, if this thing turns out to be good, we will be doing it on a yearly basis. And with that...
Do we... Any questions or comments from the council?
I have one question.
Councilor Bedison.
There will be carnitas, right? Yeah. I mean, I just want to make sure that someone is going to come and...
I'll teach you the words.
We are going to have carnitas.
All right.
We are going to have carnitas. And hope, yes, hope, boy. Yeah.
Mayor, I want to let you know that we did submit all the required permits. Cheese department, we actually met down at the park today. It's going to be set up similar to the wine festival. It's just that we're going to close more main street because we're going to install more porta-potties than what we had for the wine fiesta festival. And then, all the food vendors will be within the fence. There will be one entrance where they will carve everyone. And I believe you're going to have wristbands to identify those...
Over 21.
Over 21, 21 and over, and then those under. And then, you're going to have, because it's multiple days, you're going to have different colored bands for different days.
Correct.
So, they'll be able to identify the everyone that's coming in and out throughout the entire weekend.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Councilor Bedison?
So, if I'm correct, it's $5 a day, right, to attend at their gates?
$5 a day, or $10 on the weekend. It's what the group said for us to do, and I said, "That's fine."
Okay.
But if you want to give us $5 a day, that's fine, too.
Okay. If they want to give you more, that's fine, too, right?
Yes, sir.
So, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Do I hear a motion, Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve our special dispensary permit application and waiver of NMSA 1978-60-6B-10 for alcohol sales near the church for the Carnitas Musica y Mas Fiesta from August 30 to September 1, 2019, at Golf Park, 1201 North Oak Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Alcohol service on August 30 from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., August 31 from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and September 1 from 12:00 noon to 6:00 p.m. Liquor license holder, number 28098. Owner name, Dahl Enterprises LLC, DBA Q's Southern Bistro, 101 West College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
I'll second that. Motion is stated.
Councilor Canno, thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think that's for the record. It should be noted that the license holder is not present, and if Counselor Ray would affirm that he's been authorized on their behalf to ask for this public celebration permit, I think we'll be covered.
We did talk about that.
So, are you authorized to make the request on their behalf?
Yes, please.
Good. Thank you.
Let the records reflect that, please, ma'am. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item, eleven B, the approval/disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for the Outdoor Economic Conference reception on October 3, 2019, at the Big Ditch Park, between Sixth Street and Kelly Street. Alcohol service on October 3 from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Liquor license holder, license number 67085, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, and license number 63013, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA Little Toad Creek Distillery, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico. I believe Mr. Simoes Orteo will make this presentation.
Excuse me. Mayor and Town Council, I'm Simon Satella III with New Mexico Business Alliance. I'm the on-ground coordinator for the Outdoor Economics Conference. I'm actually here today to ask you to approve our permit request. It's for the Big Ditch San Vicente recreational area, which is behind the Food Co-op and, you know, down in that walkway area. We are actually asking to, it'll be closed between Kelly Street and Sixth Street, and Little Toad is actually providing the alcohol and the security. It is also ADA accessible. There is a ramp on the Kelly Street entrance, and we are hosting, oh, sorry, hosting the Outdoor Economics Conference to help develop and enhance opportunities to grow outdoor recreation economy locally and across the state. We're also our sponsors of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, WNMU. So, this is an opportunity for everybody to kind of get engaged within this program. So, I'd like for you guys to ask me any questions that you have about the Outdoor Economics Conference or about the event. There is a little bit of discrepancy, though. It should actually read from 5:00 to 8:30, because the event doesn't actually start until 5:30, and we'd like to be able to utilize that park area kind of 5:00.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilor Bedison?
So, you're going to have to amend the request, because it currently says time of alcohol service begins at 5:30 and ends at 8:00. So, leave it as such. You have someone from Little Toad Creek here?
Yes.
Yep, that's right. Okay, great. And then, one quick question. Will there be fencing? So, there will be fencing to ensure that, you know, who's come through?
With the map that I provided the town, it shows that we are fencing it off between Kelly Street and Sixth Street.
So, to clarify that, it has two natural barriers. Rock wall on the, I believe that's the west side, and then it has a sheer drop with a small partition wall on the east side. And then, our fencing will create the barrier.
The ends.
Correct. The ends. Yeah.
Unless you have rock climbers there, so you have to come up the sheer wall.
Hey, that would be cool to see.
Yeah, it would be interesting.
I mean, it is outdoor economics, so, I mean, you know.
Yeah, that'd be, I don't think they can do it.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions from the council? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Canno?
Actually, just a question first. So, we are going to amend it then, or we aren't?
We aren't.
No? Okay. All right, then. I'm going to approve of two public celebration permit applications for the Outdoor Economics Conference reception on October 3, 2019, at the Big Ditch Park, between Sixth Street and Kelly Street. Alcohol service on October 3 from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. Liquor license holder, license number 67085, Little Toad Creek LLC, doing business as Little Toad Creek Brewery, and license number 63013, Little Toad Creek LLC, doing business as Little Toad Creek Distillery, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ray?
I'll second that.
For a motion and a second, any comments or discussion from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Town Council.
Thank you. Next item is eleven C, the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2019-27, a resolution to support the efforts of Cory Caminos Transportation Services. Councilor Ammon Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the annual resolution that is required by the New Mexico Department of Transportation where a member of the Dairy Transportation Authority commits a cash match to the overall budget for the next year for Cory Caminos. I want to say a couple of things. I won't take very long. One is that Mr. Brown honored me by asking me to be part of the senior collaboration research that's going on right now. And in the report that will be coming out probably in the next couple of months, they'll talk about how the lower needs that we're going to have when Silver City moves from being third ninth in the state to fourth in the state in terms of retirees is a greater need for transportation and the lot of the efforts of Cory Caminos in there. Cory Caminos is a collaboration between Grant County, Little County, the city of Dominion, and the Town of Silver City. The data that I have shows that last year, in 2018, Cory Caminos had 99,684 rides. Now, that doesn't mean riders, because that would be more than three times the population of the town, but it means that a person gets on a stop, gets off to go shopping at a big store, and then gets back on and goes back home. That's considered two rides, one there, one there. So, that's almost 100,000 rides in a year, and the Town of Silver City, our silver route, really accounted for a third of those. There's 6,609 rides on that circuit within the Town of Silver City. And so, it is a very important organization. I know we've had concerns in the past that audits from the DOT, they were being encouraged to no longer have a special call for people with disabilities. Of course, as sure as the last HCA meeting, that the most current audit from the Department of Transportation said that that was not a finding, that that was, they could understand the reasoning for us continuing those services. So, this is our annual resolution, and it is a really important service, and we are an important, this is an opportunity we deserve, our community.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilor Ammon Smith? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ammon Smith?
I move to approve of Resolution Number 2019-27, a resolution to support the efforts of Cory Caminos Transportation Services.
Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ray?
I'll second that.
For a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please, ma'am.
Councilor Bedison?
Aye.
Councilor Ammon Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Canno?
Aye. Motion carries. Enammaslam. The next item is eleven D, the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2019-28, a resolution adopted in the 2021-2025 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, ICIP. Priscilla Oriando will make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. The Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan is a plan that establishes planning priorities for anticipated capital projects. It covers a five-year fiscal period, and it's an important tool to display the town's priority projects. It focuses on critical need projects and encourages planning. It is not a wish list. It's not a funding application or a funding source. However, having projects on the list helps increase funding opportunities. For instance, the governor's office uses the ICIP publication when vetting projects. The town's ICIP this last fiscal year has, we fully funded and completed projects, the downtown sidewalk and AD improvements, college street lights, purchased utility vehicles for our utility department, wastewater treatment plant and headworks improvements, phase three improvements to Silver Street, and phase one ridg road improvements project.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, Mayor. We have to have this resolution every year, and you'll see that we're going, as of last year, we have to start drafting an ICIP plan for our senior center as well, which will begin the minute. But all of these projects are needs that have been identified by town staff as well as the public. And on that side, it's more wants than actual needs, but we've put them on there for them. But the most important ones are the top five. The top five have either been, we've identified a possible funding source, or we're working with somebody else. For instance, Ridge Road Road, that would be phase two from Pheasant to the city limits, I believe. That would be to complete Ridge Road in the city limits. The Little Wall Road, that's a joint application with Grant County for the federal land grant. Scott Park, we're actually, we've got the loan to complete the work, which will be the concession sent back to them, and to complete that landfill. Also, Mayor, we still need some money to install the scoreboards. We purchased the scoreboards for approximately $26,000, $28,000, all four of them, but to install them, it's cost us $75,000 because of being on the landfill. So, you know, it's, if there weren't, there's always something. Then the sidewalks, of course, we continue to fix projects throughout town. Sidewalks is a priority that we don't have a lot of internal money for. We use most of our money for street patching and stuff like that. And number five would be some planning and design money so we can start looking at the project to expand Golf Park, as well as to possibly move City Hall to the Washington Federal Building, consolidate all of our offices there, or most of our offices there. This does not mean that we're going to move forward with that project, but it's so we can start the planning process, start including the public in the planning and design. So, we, planning primarily, so we can identify what the public actually wants. So, those are the main things that we're looking at for this next fiscal year. Any questions?
Any? Councilor Bedison?
So, do you know, have you identified the sidewalks that you're going to work on in Silver City?
Um, yeah.
Also, Mayor, we still need somebody to install the scoreboards. We purchased the scoreboards for approximately $26,000, $28,000, all four of them, but to install them, it's costing $75,000 because of being on the landfill. So, you know, it's, if there was, there's always something. Then the sidewalks, of course, we continue to fix projects throughout town. Sidewalk is a priority that we don't have a lot of internal money for. We use most of our money for street patching and stuff like that. And number five would be some planning and design money so we can start looking at the project to expand Golf Park as well as to possibly move City Hall to the Washington Federal Building, consolidate all of our offices there, or most of our offices there. This does not mean that we're going to move forward with that project, but it's so we can start the planning process, start including the public in the planning and the design. So we plan primarily so we can identify what the public actually wants. So those are the main things that we're, we are looking at for this next fiscal year. Any questions?
Any, Councilor Madison?
So, do you know, have you identified the sidewalks that you're going to work on in Silver City?
They would be identified in the paving master plan. We did a paving master plan about eight years ago, and we've been updating it internally. The projects that we've been working on, we've been removing them to the top of that list, and then as the next priorities are the ones that will move up. It depends on right now, you know, because we've got money for the downtown sidewalks. There's a lot of work that needs to be done on the downtown sidewalks, and so we would like to work in that area for a little while. Especially the back streets in the downtown need a lot of work. There's very little ADA accessibility on the back streets, so we would like to take care of that. So that's most likely where we would be working next year if we do get some funds.
So, I mean, there's a reason I'm asking this, and you know that because I brought it up every year.
It's actually, it's 19. It's 19. You can look it up to number six if you want.
I've done that every year. I'm just saying, you know.
We did some work on it this year.
No, and I know you did.
I tried to do some, at least a little bit of it.
And I'm not sure, I guess, I just want to make sure that at some point that gets completed. And I saw that it had moved all the way down to 19, so I was like, oh, God.
Yeah, no, it's, I, you know, the most important ones are the top five.
Right, right. So I'm just going to request again that somehow we complete the work on Cactus that we promised 11 years ago.
We're looking at it.
Yeah. So, and I had a question about the 32nd Street paving, since that was, the subject had an article in the paper about the chip ceiling and then the fox heel, because I know that we passed that, and that's been, they've been working on that. So, the 32nd Street paving for 3 million in 2021, how does that relate to what we're doing now?
That would be a complete reconstruction.
So, just getting it out?
It would take everything out, take out the, basically, it's almost no base on the 32nd Street right now. I mean, probably 80% of our streets in town are chip sealed roads.
Right, we don't have a base.
Yeah, so they've got very little base of any, and so those streets will shift and move a lot faster than a street like PA Road, Swan, Silver, those that we've completely reconstructed. And so that road, to get a complete, brand-new street is going to cost about over $3 million. And so that doesn't count sidewalks, which is another 840-some thousand dollars.
So is this part of the map, or is it considered, I mean, is Florida arguing?
No.
I didn't think so. I was just asking. So this would be something that we would seek federal funding for? I mean, that's a large amount of money.
There's going to be federal funding. I spoke with Representative Martinez, you know, the additional $50 million for roadwork. They're looking at doing the same thing next year, so that might be a possibility. So we might do some design work on that to get it ready with talent funds, so we can start working, so we have a better chance of getting funded from a plot such as that, so we can.
Because I think the current funds are really directed toward the southeast portion of the state because it's been, the roads are being destroyed by all of that.
Well, from what I was told is of that $50 million, there's a few million dollars that were awarded to this area, I believe, Grant County, Santa Clara, and I think one other area was the one that's going to be here.
So there's an option there, potentially, okay. So I guess, I know that the top five are the most important, but that doesn't mean that if money doesn't come available, that you aren't going to go for getting funding.
Yeah, I think she, Priscilla, mentioned that some of the projects that we did complete that weren't part of the top five.
They're not even the top five in the last year, so it just depends, just depends on how many.
Just depending on what comes up and what the possibilities are, so. We will jump on any, anything that we can, when we can, and we won't follow this if there is a funding opportunity that is made available to us.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Brown? Any questions or comments for our town plan? There's Ariana. Mr. Brown, what do we do with 32nd Street in, is it 2021, you said?
It's listed on 2021, but most likely it's going to take future years. Most likely what we might start doing is actual design.
Do you have any plans for bike lanes?
Yes. And that would be more than white enough to go by.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Council Connor?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve of Resolution Number 2019-28, a resolution adopting the 2021-2025 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, ICIP.
If you have a second?
This way.
Councilor Madison?
A second. The motion is stated.
A motion and a second. Any discussion further? Roll call, please, in.
Councilor Hunter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Day?
Aye.
Councilor Ennis Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Benson?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Annamalsman. The next item is 11E, the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2019-29, a resolution adopting the 2021-2025 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, ICIP, for the Silver City Senior Center. A town planner, Priscilla?
So the senior center is owned by the town, but it's managed by HMS. They're included in our ICIP, but they also have their own, so they need a separate resolution, and they have a separate list. Right now, they have just three projects on there. I know they just added their Silver Panel Installation. That one's for 2023, and the other two are listed for 2021.
The general one is stucco roofing, some painting, and turnip, and then the second one was transportation equipment.
Any questions or comments? Councilor Madison?
So just quickly, are these also projects that would go on as the deal bomb for senior centers?
That's specifically what this is.
Because that's what, that will be coming up next year.
In fact, we received that, I believe, $120-some thousand this year for senior centers.
That's what I was saying.
Kitchen equipment and stuff like that.
Right.
That was applied for in previous years.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to approve of Resolution Number 2019-29, a resolution adopting the 2021-2025 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, ICIP, for the Silver City Senior Center.
Thank you. Have a second. Councilor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. A second. The motion is stated.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Roll call, please, in.
Councilor Connor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wright?
Aye.
Councilor Ennis Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Benson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Annamalsman. Thank you. Next is 11F, the approval/disapproval of Notice of Intent, Argent Number 1285, and Argent amending Appendix C, Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010, Article 3, District Regulations, by adding a new section, 3.3.1K, entitled Small Cell Wireless Communication Facilities, and incorporated herein by reference as Appendix 1, providing definitions, providing for permits, and providing for survivability. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start a little bit of the background here and let folks know that what this Notice of Intent is aiming to do is to really, as much as possible, keep what we can control as local governments in our hands. Just to let you know, the federal telecommunications back in 1990 pronounced and declared invalid any state rules that were supposed to entry or limited competition in both wireless and non-sense telephone service. So this is a telecommunications move. Last year, in the 2018 New Mexico Legislature, House Bill 38, titled Wireless Consumer Advanced Infrastructure Investment Act, passed from the houses and was signed by the governor in February 2018, and it became effective in September of 2018, which remarkably enough was the exact same month that a declaratory statement was released by the Federal Communications Commission, adopting regulations limiting the abilities of cities and states to regulate what's called small cell sites, which are essentially home attachments, but they might also be on buildings needed for the deployment of 5G networks. This was a really interesting move because essentially both federal law, then state law, and then FCC declaratory regulations took away a great deal of the powers that local governments had. This FCC declaratory regulation limited the type and amount of fees that municipalities, counties, and states could charge, set specific shot clocks, which means timelines of always 60 days for cities and states to authorize proposals, and limited non-fee requirements that they could institute, and that became effective this year. What that resulted in is a scramble among many local governments, including ours, to make sure that we have, first of all, some new ordinances that maintain what control we do have, and second, to make sure that the new use ordinance that we have that talks about telecommunications complies with federal and state law. We've got federal and state law going on here. And there's been some concerns expressed about how quickly the FCC did this move, but it's really been supported by the federal executive branch of the government. And in fact, there's a whole series of new articles that throw things like FCC removing regulatory barriers. So what they see as regulatory barriers, we saw as thoughtful reviews to be able to maintain the quality of our infrastructure and our IP in Silver City. But we, of course, are going to be in compliance with this NOI, as my fellow councilors choose to vote for. Let me say here that I've been working with Mr. Jimmels on this, and what this NOI really does is it parallels the state statute, and it parallels the declaratory regulations that were published by the FCC. So we have in it what we can charge, how long we will take, that we will require permanent process, that our historic and design dedicated or designated areas have standards that hopefully these telecommunications guys will abide by because they're supposed to. Mr. Reynolds, what have I left out or forgotten?
I think we covered it all. I think the danger, if we don't have this ordinance, is that companies will be able to come in and say, well, you don't have an ordinance. We're going to put this here, and you can't stop us. Take us to court.
That has already happened, not here, but in other smaller municipalities in Pennsylvania and California.
So with the ordinance, it provides the city with a means of oversight, with standardization of the process, and protection of our historic districts and our arts and cultural district, that we will have some input in the design of these small cell wireless facilities.
Yes, yeah. So here's a few, I hope that folks will actually, if this passes, the council will send online that we will look at it, all 24 pages of it, because it has all of the specifics. And I know that there are a few things that we need to look at and work on for sure in it, through my fellow councillor, brother, and you want to speak to that, or, Mr. Mayor, you want to?
Thank you. I was personally pleased to see that you're attempting to protect our historic district as much as, as much as possible. Any questions or comments from the council? Councilor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, one of the things, we've talked, I've talked about this before because in 2018, the National League of Cities Meeting in Washington, every single municipality went and told their congresspeople to please make sure that municipal autonomy could be retained. In my understanding, the counties did the same thing. Unfortunately, the FCC ruling came about, which didn't allow even for legislation to go forward. So the only way to change what we're required to do in terms of the FCC ruling, regulation, is a change in administration in D.C., so that autonomy will come back to municipalities and land use codes, and everything else will be viable again. So I just wanted to let folks know that I'm glad that we're doing this. I think it's really important to be able to save what we can and be able to ensure that we save our historic districts and everything else like that. One of the suggestions that I make is that, I can't remember the section, I'm sorry, I didn't write it down last night, but where it talks about
Page seven.
The federal register of historic places that we also include in there, the State of New Mexico Register of Cultural Properties, because in New Mexico, the register of cultural properties is something that's determined by cultural properties with the U Committee that's of the state. And it also includes landscapes. So, and they have designated certain landscapes, especially with tribal entities, as a cultural property, meaning that it cannot be changed. So I think that that's something to consider. And the other question I have, and I think I know the answer, but when it says days, the question is, does that include weekends, or is that work days? So, so that narrows even more down the shot clock on some of these things. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Reynolds, Councilwoman Smith, Mr. Brown, do you have any input? Okay, if there be none, I will entertain a motion. Councilwoman Smith?
I'm going to approve of Notice of Intent, Argent Number 1285, and Argent amending Appendix C, Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010, Article 3, District Regulations, by adding a new section, 3.3.1K, entitled Small Cell Wireless Communication Facilities, and incorporated herein by reference as Appendix 1, providing definitions, providing for permits, and providing for survivability.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second that.
Motion and second. Any other discussion or comments among the council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight, and do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No, we haven't.
Well, motion, is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?